Okay, I will call the Special Finals Committee meeting to order at 6:45. Number one, President Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Schock, and myself. Number one, Special Finals Committee meeting was called by Council President Fissler of the Administration to approve the appropriations and the WPPLF loan application. The meeting was called to order by Monica at 6:45 PM. Number two, appropriations.
Okay, we have an additional appropriation tonight. This is due to some monies that came in that we didn't know about when we get the budget back in December. It actually comes through the federal government to the Police Department for confiscated materials and monies that they receive. So they receive $7,500 and we need to appropriate that to the capital outlet item within the Police Department in the federal equitable sharing fund. And this is to purchase bicycles or bicycle officers and they need to get this as soon as possible, so we want to get it through to the Department tonight.
Because the training is coming up. They've got to skip here, they've got to keep to that. Okay. Well, make a motion to put that in there.
Number two. Kevin, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number three, the WPPLF loan application.
Yes, this loan application, we were fortunate to be awarded a house where we are receiving a low, a zero interest loan, excuse me, zero interest loan in the state of Ohio to help us accelerate the tie-ins. This is work that we're already required to do, but we can do it now and pay it back over, spend a period of time, close to like 30 years, at zero interest. The benefits of this, there will, this is work that we have to do anyway. So it's saving the residents of Bucyrus hundreds of thousands of dollars. The storm water, the tie-ins have to be completed before we're going to be 100% effective on this. And so this allows us two things. Number one, like I mentioned, it allows us to borrow the money at zero interest. So we're paying back money in future dollars. So the present value of $4 million, we're going to, thanks, is going to be paid back on much cheaper dollars depending on what the inflation rate is. Number two, the work that we do now, we can purchase in 2019 crisis. So this work, let's say we're going to do it in 2023 or 2024, 2025, will be at a more expensive rate. Obviously, the cost of material is going up, the cost of labor. So there's two major savings here. Over the course of a 30-year payback plus that, it would be at least a half a million dollars that we're saving the residents of Bucyrus in the future cost. So no loan on this is actually, we're going to be, we're going to do this work anyway. I mean, we have to do it. We've already agreed to do this work. It's not, has no effect on the general fund at all, on tax revenue. This is money is completely different fund, this is the enterprise funds. So this is, this is why it's the administration recommending that we accept this loan, because it's a savings for the residents of Bucyrus. And helps us fulfill our obligation to the EPA.
This piece of legislation is replacing the one that was held to a first reading last time because there were two issues in here that they wanted changed regarding the resolution that we passed. So the one that was held to a first reading last time, that's been voided out and this is a new one. The two changes were in here were made regarding this being sanitary storm sewers, yeah, slash, sanitary slash storm sewers. So those were the changes that were requested for in here.
Alex, Kevin?
I've got a plethora of questions. Is there a deadline for this application to be made?
Yes, I don't know what it is, but it has to be, the application has to be made here. I believe, don't quote me, but I believe sometime, there is a deadline, I think.
Are we moving over?
Yes, we're moving over the deadline. I don't know, I can find out.
April 2nd?
April, okay.
April 2nd?
I thought I was going to say the first week of April, so.
Reading about the dedicated source of repayment, this water usage charges, is there currently enough in our current rates or is there an anticipated increase in future rates to be able to cover the repayment?
Well, yeah, right now, we are, our revenue in that fund is a little short. We've been, we've been, just currently, if this is coming out of the?
This does not come out of the water pump, it'll be repaid by sewer and storm water.
Sewer, storm water, yes, okay, so it's got?
So I don't know why this?
Because the water rates drive the sewer.
Well, that's true.
Right?
But we, this is? I mean, the water usage drives the sewer charges.
Drive, use it drives the sewer charges, yes.
But we also have a special charge in there for the EPA charge, $7.20 too. You can have a special charge.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that is going, we'll need to anticipate that.
Well, the agreement we made with EPA and with our engineers, with Arcadis, was a seven year program and we're going to have to look at everything after that. And see, see what kind of increases there need, if any increases. I do anticipate, you know, as costs go up, the things that will have them increases.
Arcadis and Grantstod are the ones that have brought this information to us. Have we, I feel bad that I don't really answer this, but have we met the EPA without them or has it all been through them that we?
The original means with EPA were before our administration.
You know, they're going to check our CSOs this spring, I understand, and there's a potential that we may be relieved of some of the burden based on how those numbers fall. That's where I'm at, is just wanting to know.
We're still a ways, and we, the flow is anecdotally down, but you know, as far as the actual measurements, you know, we'll be doing those this spring. And hopefully, it all comes down about to the overflows. If we, if we get through the first seven years and, you know, we've accomplished and then, you know, then we can go back with the EPA that way. And that's going to be an ongoing discussion.
What is the impact if we don't get this submitted by April 2nd and that would put it into the next year, I would assume?
I think it's a whole, yeah, whole year. If we qualify for the following year, we may or may not even, so.
And do we know what the EPA fines are if we fail to take their steps?
No, I mean, it's, I know, not the EPA, but I think one of the fines that I did see from, and passed was $20,000, don't quote me on this, but I couldn't tell you what EPA fines are, but it could be, it's hundreds of thousands a year. It's hundreds, it would be substantial fines. We've already signed this agreement, we're not, we're not going back. Council's voted all the way back to 2016 and we're well on the way to compliance with EPA, we're not, we're not going back now.
I just got some questions and some reservations too, you know, borrowing, 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 and I know it's at zero interest, but it's still stuff we have to pay back and I just want to make sure we're on the ground, the ability to pay it back without, you know, losing our rates again and again. And my other concern was wondering if Arcadis and Grantstod are, you know, I have to play devil's advocate here.
If you don't, if you don't borrow the money, the rates will definitely go up more. It's as simple as that, because we're going to have to do this very soon. So we're going to have to raise rates to fund this money out of day-to-day funds to these tie-ins. Those tie-ins have to be done. So rates will definitely go up and they will go up quickly in the short term, because those tie-ins have to be done and complete that southern trunk line. So borrowing the money allows us, we're really saving the residents substantial amount of money. If you can imagine, let's say we're saving half a million dollars and we have five, roughly 5,000 customers, sewer customers, so you can do the math there, saving each one of them, you know.
Now, I've heard it mentioned that it was, what, a $4 million?
Well, yeah, it's up to $4 million.
Up to, but in this legislation, I don't see a cap on that anywhere. Do we feel we're going to need the full $4 million?
I'd borrow every, it's the closest thing to a grant. I would borrow every penny we could get, because it's wise or it's a good deal for the citizens of Bucyrus.
Won't this come back to council before the work is done for another resolution? I mean, approving the work and?
You, you mean the bid that's going, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have to bid.
Yeah, they're off, they're off to bid now.
They're off to bid now and it has a cap on it, right?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be that again.
Yeah, it's off to bid now.
I just try to wrap my head around it all, because it just, try to be cautious that we don't take on more than we can afford to pay back.
That's for sure. Can I speak to this a little bit? If we don't follow the administrative order that we've signed and agreed to, I mean, this is the US EPA. We've been through lots of meetings with them, with engineers, with, you know, I recall one particular meeting where even the EPA attorneys didn't agree with each other and over, you know, what we were doing. But if we don't abide by this administrative order, they will come in and tell us what we're going to charge the citizens for water. And what they had suggested at one point was that we needed to be charging $70 or more per month just for sewer charges, so that we could complete this when they wanted it done. And, you know, we're really behind the eight ball, but if we don't get this funding at zero percent and be able to pay it back over this period of time and meet their requirements, we could be in a world of hurt. And I don't believe we want.
We're going to be doing this job, whether you borrow the money to do it and pay it back over 30 years or whether we raise rates immediately. You guys make the choice, you know, it's up to you. I just say it's a, it's a gift horse and it's staring us in the mouth.
I mean, I have no question that the US EPA or Ohio EPA would come in here and be handed with us, so I definitely understand that. The question, I guess, is, that I had is, is there any, have we had any additional, is there any planned meetings with the Ohio EPA? Because we do have a new administration in Columbus.
This is a federal.
This is federal, this is.
Ohio EPA threw up their hands, as far as I know, before our administration, and they said, we've had it with you guys, we're returning you in the federal, federal comes in and this is the, this is the best agreement.
Okay, so as of pre-2016, we were handed over to the federal?
We were handed, Ohio EPA has nothing to do with that anymore. And we were able to negotiate to do this in chunks. The Ohio EPA wanted it done immediate, like the others said, and you were looking at $70 a month per household to start. What we have now is $7.20, plus we had 3% increases every year. We negotiated a very favorable rate.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I mean, a 0% interest loan is a great deal and it's a large sum of money to get a 0% interest loan on. It's not a grant though, a grant we wouldn't be paying back ever. I mean, we would be, we're going to have to pay back a loan. I guess, you know, my, my question is, do we have any plan to try and negotiate with the EPA at whatever level of government to try and give us some relief on this? Because to me, the benefit of this project, while it serves to benefit city of Bucyrus on a small scale, the benefits derived from this project are mostly for those who live north of us with the clean water that's being provided for the Great Lakes. I don't see this as a project that, you know, and I'm sure there's other towns that are dealing with this exact same thing. But to me, this is a, this is a, this is something that, you know, either we, we should be coordinating with those other towns to try and bring together some sort of a?
The other towns are doing the same thing.
Oh, I realize, and I think we should take the loan. I mean, I'm not opposed to taking the loan, but I also think at the same time we take the loan, we should try and organize and find out if there's something that can be done to provide some relief, because truly, you know, we're, we're an hour plus south of where the benefits being derived from most of this work being done, but we're going to bear the cost of it, so.
Well, that's, you know, that's my only point. No pun intended, but it's water under the bridge. I mean, this has been, this has been cited.
I'm not disputing.
Yeah, your points are well taken, but these are things that we all brought up and, you know, this is the, this is the single largest undertaking in the history of the city of Bucyrus, and it's all underground. And number two, the benefit is primarily, you know, downstream, right? You know, we have, we don't want, we don't want 70 overflows of raw sewage in this dusky river. We don't want it for our own health.
Exactly.
But you're right, it builds up as a good, it goes downstream. These are things that council analyzed and discussed and debated and voted unanimously to accept the US EPA's, our acceptance of their mandate order. And I know, I know it's a new council, you weren't on council that?
No, no.
But it's, it's, we're not going to be going back to EPA and turn up the agreement.
No, I'm not suggesting we should. I think, I think the question is, from my perspective, you know, we're, we're in a new administration, state and federal, presidential level, you know, I just think it might be we're having a discussion. I know it's probably not going to get anywhere.
I've had it.
The EPA is the EPA.
You know, I asked you to remember in 15, when we entered in the consent decree with EPA, we entered into an agreement that was a 21-year agreement with three seven-year agreements. That was the result of, well, two years that I was involved of negotiations with EPA, because prior to that, we had a mandate from them with tens of millions of dollars in penalties that were passed, that were already proposed. That was set aside and they re-creed this 21-year plan. In reviewing that and in preparation for that in 15, and the engineers that were, we were working with in 15, they were back to tell you that it was unheard to that, get that original set aside and then get them to agree this, this three seven-year plan over 20 years, unheard. So, yeah, I hear what you're saying, the administration, maybe they're lessening the donies. The reality of it is, is they're not here enforcing the sewer separation on towns all over, all over the United States without regard to the impact on actual flow in sanitary sewers, which is one of the next problems. But reopening is a two-way door and we could reopen and new administration, and as you said, can say, why would they ever agree to this to reducing these penalties and just letting you get into this money, why would you pay it? So it is a two-way door. We spent two years, we spent a ton of money on our engineers and luckily, frankly, it only got worked out when the attorneys got out of it and engineers were able to talk to engineers and they came up with an agreement. And that's maybe the best decision we made, getting the attorneys out of it during that timeframe, but if we get back in, we want to reopen this, which we could, and maybe we get somewhere, but it could go both ways and we have to factor in what the cost of the negotiations would be, both from engineers and studies and, you know, if lawyers get involved.
Well, I'm not suggesting we stop progress while we, while we attempt to build consensus on something along the line, but I don't want that.
No, a lot of due process in those negotiations, this is the issue.
And so I recall telling them that we can't afford it and trying to show them numbers of why we can't afford it, they didn't care. They just said, you're going to do this and it's going to happen, or else.
And also know that this is, everything that was done down Southern Avenue was to do what we're going to be doing now. This is where we're going to be putting, start to putting the majority of people back into that now and take the advantage of everything that we've been doing for the last year and a half. So it's just the process.
You have Dan?
I just want, I started this and my original question was Resolution 224-217 that we passed on, 8317, is the same as this? Is this a new loan or is this that same?
It's a new loan. Oh, I'm sorry, which is?
It's the same.
It's the same one.
It's the same money.
Same money, yeah.
But we have hoops we have to jump through, as I understand, and they need this legislation in place.
But I just don't get why we already passed, we already passed the resolution for this, why do we have to pass it? This should be good forever, shouldn't it? Is there a limit on the resolution? 90 days or what?
If you sign a contract, is it good forever?
No, it's a day, but this is, this resolution, this is that we're going to let him look into this, come up with a way to pay for it?
Well, the original draw was for drawing, a draw of money was for drawing. This is where we started first with engineering expenses, which sit completely separate from, this is where they're going to actually go out and start doing the construction now. You think engineering is not cheap?
It appeared to be almost identical.
This is planning, designing, construction.
Yeah. Did you, I don't know why I have that one in front of me now. Well, and then my second question was ordinance 47-217, we raised sewer rates to pay for this. With my assumption, maybe I assumed wrong, they needed 10%.
Yes.
Yes. So we already raised rates for it and we've already passed the resolution, so is this, this is not a new loan? Is that what you're saying? Or is it?
I guess that's what I'm saying. I think it's, I think it's the same pot of money. We, what we applied for last year and used was $70,000 for design work that was done and this is the remainder of that same money.
But isn't that put into the budget, $4 million?
It is.
It is in the budget, but they require this piece of legislation.
Money's been approved already.
Yes.
If they don't give this piece of legislation though, we're not getting the money.
Yeah, I don't understand, but you know, I thought we'd already give them that piece of legislation. If you need it again, I guess they need it again.
We were approved for up to $4 million previously and we only took $70,000 and we were only distributing.
Because we were working on the design of all of this.
And we were only distributing $70,000 of that $4 million.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to say, with Dan trying to wrap my head around that. He answers a lot of questions. Okay.
Mayo? So do I have a motion to authorize America to apply for accept an energy water pollution control loan plan agreement on behalf of the city for planning, designing indoor construction of sanitary storm sewers and as amending a dedicated repayment source to the loan? Is there a number?
So, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye. So you request legislation then? For discussing this meeting tonight? Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the Special Finals Committee meeting?
So, I do have one question, there was another item in our packet, I just want to make sure we were skipping that for the Mark's Grant, that was in our packet for this? Was that something we needed to discuss? Or did I just misread that?
That was for the Police Department.
Oh, so it's just on the same page?
That appropriation, yeah.
Okay. Then I saw it.
So who is, who is first to adjourn? Dan? You will adjourn 7:10 PM.
The regular meeting of Bucyrus State Council from March the 19th, 2019 is called to order. Please stand in joining the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Heber?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Chukka?
Here.
Sack?
Here.
Foat?
Here.
Cho?
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes of the March 5th, 2019 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So, second?
Motion by Mr. Schock, second by Mr. Foat, to accept the March 5th, 2019, regular meeting minutes, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak this evening. We have Gary Frankhouse with us from the Crawford County Partnership and he's got a short presentation for us. Gary, good stuff there, we need you to hand in an address, please.
Gary Frankhouse, 117 East Mansfield Street, Bucyrus. Thanks for giving me a short moment to share a couple items as it relates to successes in Bucyrus and Crawford County. Two weeks ago today, had an opportunity to go up to Toledo, invitation from the RGP Northwest, that's our regional connection to Jobs Ohio, to receive an award called the Governor's Cup. To give you some background, what the Governor's Cup is, back in August, September, we were asked to submit projects within the county that met one of three criteria from a business standpoint. One, it was to add 20 or more jobs. Second was to add 20,000 square foot or more to a facility and the third was a million dollar investment or more. So we submitted four projects, three from Bucyrus, one from Galian. The three from Bucyrus were Ohio Mutual Insurance Group, First Federal Community Bank, and then Advanced Fiber Tech. For those of you that don't know, Ohio Mutual is renovating their entire complex to prepare for the workforce of tomorrow. First Federal Community Bank, somewhat the same thing, I think today was the official grand opening. And I would say if you haven't been in there, go, it's amazing what it looks like, it makes you want to bank. And with the new generation who doesn't want to go into banks, I think they're going to go in, so congratulations. I know Monica's works there and it's really quite beautiful. And then Doug Luthold out of Advanced Fiber Tech invested in a robot that does the bagging of cellulose insulation and then loads out on pallets. And then the fourth project was in Galian, that was corporate manufacturing. We had a fifth, the business owner didn't get submitted in time, so what I'm about to share could have maybe been a little bit better. I want to say that this is the first time we've ever submitted as a county. So this is kind of a benchmark of where we started. And now it's like everything's on my mind in terms of those three criteria, how can we build from where we are? But the good news is with that submission, it's a group called Site Selection Magazine, it's a national magazine, site selectors promote different communities, work with industry to expand or to place them in a new area of subtraction from my standpoint. The categories are based on population and it's a 10,000 population up to 100,000, that's small cities, that's what we were in. And then it goes from 100,000 to a million, which is, I'm going to call that tier one, and then a million plus is tier two. So within our category of small cities, we ranked 41st in the country. So a nice accomplishment. Now that I'm aware of it, you know, my goal is to be in the top 10, and I'm trying to share this message of criteria whenever I get a chance to speak, because I am involved in some of those, but a lot of businesses just invest, because they know it's, that what they need to do to advance into the, into the future. And so I'm asking them to share that information with me so that we can submit that. Sometimes it will be applicable with Jobs Ohio and grants, sometimes there may be it will be applicable with Jobs Ohio and grants. Sometimes there may be things that we can help them through our relationship with municipal income tax credits or CRAs that Rob's helped me so much with and I think Doug as well, and we're prepared to do that. So we're becoming much more advanced in our ability to attract and expand. So this was a real feather in our cap and I wanted to share that with you. Hopefully you saw it on social media. I would ask all of you as investors to like our page. It's more important, I realize every day, shared in the state of the vision that we've started marketing properties. So the Gelling Building out in the Ohio Crossroads Industrial Center, we submitted that on social media on a Friday evening and Saturday morning I had an email from Site Selector in Germany asking me about the facility. About a week later, project came down from Jobs Ohio, a German parts manufacturer was looking for a specific building that was, looked exactly like this building. So we, I did submit that and we're still waiting to hear because there's probably 10 to 15 states that can submit 10 properties. Ours was one of the, one of the ones submitted by Jobs Ohio. So that's a, that's a good opportunity for us. So we'll know more about that. But it's those likes that have that organic ability for us to be marketed. So that was a big victory and Site Selector Magazine, I brought a piece here that says what matters most to site selectors from a local criteria standpoint. Number one is workforce skills, number two is transportation infrastructure, number three is workforce development, number four is higher education, number five utilities, cost and reliability. So I share that because, you know, just sitting in and listening to what you guys are discussing, so important. And from where I stand when I'm talking to them, we have some magnificent infrastructure. Yes, just like a lot of other communities in Ohio, we have to go through a separation and I agree, sometimes it seems unfair, but you know, I compliment you for taking that step forward because it's something that we share from a standpoint of capacity issues that we have to recruit. So. And the last thing I wanted to share tonight was, I brought this piece over here from Focus on Business. This was an article that went out in a national publication and it relates to workforce. And I mentioned workforce skills was number one and workforce development was number three. We've built a continuum by working with our schools. Every month, all six of our public school superintendents meet in our office and they're working together and they're focused on driving workforce down into the elementary. You've heard of the Leader in Me program, that's K through five, the wage tours where we're taking eighth and ninth graders into industry. Started as just manufacturing, now it's in financial services, it's in healthcare, it's in agriculture. And we're showing them the opportunities that are here. So it exposes them. Then we're coming back freshman year and we're talking about the community opportunity site that we've shown. We've got statistics now because of the 1,200 that are registered and just as of today, we added another 390 kids, all the ninth through 12th graders in Galian, with a commitment from Buckeye to do the same within the next two weeks. But what's so important about that is it's not just a job site. These kids are registering, we're getting to go in and give them a message of importance. We're asking them, "What do you think's here?" And guess what they think's here? Fast food. And then we start talking about interior design, we talk about healthcare, we talk about drone aviation for hordes, and we start showing them these jobs because there's over 300 jobs posted on that site. And you go see their facial expressions change. They realize there are things here. And it gives us the ability to then attract them back. And as I hear you guys discussing these utility costs, what's more important in increasing the population? Because roads aren't going down, police not going down, fire's not going down, sewer's not going down. The only way that we drive those costs down is put more people, the denominator, on there and start lowering our individual costs of those of us that live here. So we've gotta talk to these students. We're doing that through the community opportunity. Now we have the Crawford Success Center. We have that 2.3 bump in post-secondary education. Sounds small, $4 million. And that's based on taking that 2.3% based on our population that is applicable there and then doing the math, median household income of a household with post-secondary education or without, that's the minimum number, it's $4 million. That goes a long way in our communities. So the Success Center, the Crawford Works, now there's a program North Central State announced today, a four-year degree. That's a chance on to keep kids here. I was over at OSU last week talking to the new dean. They've got a nursing program and an engineering program. Theirs is more leadership where North Central's is more technical skills based. They're trying to keep students on the Mansfield campus for four years because they want to keep them in the area. That is good for everything you guys were working on and talking about. And that's discussed in that article because when they reached out, they said, "What are you doing for workforce?" And when we shared that, they're like, "That's a story." So we were published in that, we've got that plaque, that is the article. Hopefully you saw that. So I just wanted to share those two things with council so you could get an idea of some of the bricks, you know, building on the foundation to solve those questions of, you know, you see it right now, I want to bring jobs, I want to bring higher pay. That's great, that's the road, that's putting the sheen on. This is the work in the ground that has happened because it enables us to win those victories down the road. So I wanted to just emphasize those two points. And then finally, state of the vision. Want to thank Monica and Jeff for being there and I know Sis and Doug reached out and shared, I know your schedules were busy, and they received books, Doug and Sis did not. So I wanted to bring books to all of you because the message was pure of what we need to be thinking about. We are branding Bussiris and Crawford County. And there's two narratives that you can create with any story, there's good and bad. And she actually played a video about Cleveland when the river was burning and it was, it wasn't good. But there's another video too of how it's flourished. And her point was you guys are ambassadors of your community and you can tell one or two stories. And I think what we've been trying to emphasize is let's tell that good story because that's the perception that's created. The Governor's Cup, this article in this magazine, as we get those things out, that's what people start perceiving us as. And when we're perceived as successful, we're gonna get the results of that too. And it's saying us, and that was your message, being ambassador for your community, there is not a perfect community. She said that. There's not, there's not a perfect person. Nobody in this world is perfect. We all have flaws, right? But what we need to emphasize are those things that we're doing well and we need to do it together. Because if we get that harmony, that's the perception that's gonna be in the community. And we're gonna start winning population, we're gonna drive down costs for those of us that are here. And I wanted to hand out these books and if there's any questions, I could provide an answer. But just to thank you again for the support and giving us the chance to wake up everybody and serve Bussiris and Crawford County.
Thank you, Gary.
I've got two questions for you, Gary. Number one, I was unfortunately unable to tell you, but I've heard a lot about it. Do you have that list of 10 questions that she posed to the group? And so can you forward that to us?
It's in the book.
In the book, perfect. My other question is, can you answer on the housing study that we approved and what the status of that is?
So actually tomorrow at 11:30 and you're all invited to the Crawford Success Center, the answer is gonna be here. And we're hosting them to explain the process they're going through. They've been here for three to four weeks already. It's a 10-week process. But they're gonna talk about how they collect data, they're gonna understand who the stakeholders are, who are all of you, and you can ask questions and get a better understanding of what we're gonna be given as a product. I think it was mentioned when I came to ask, you know, months ago, ultimately they're gonna tell us, here's what you need. It's still gonna be all of our jobs, mine in particular, and I have some developers coming tomorrow to then try to move them, to put in the developments, to invest the millions of dollars for the infrastructure you guys were just talking about earlier. So that is tomorrow, it's at 11:30 and they will be here. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, Madam President, but I would like to say what he was discussing about RGP Ohio up there in Toledo, that is on, that was covered by a local news group out of Toledo. And if you haven't seen that already, I suggest everybody take a look at it, watch it because as you can elaborate, we're one of five site-selected areas in the United States, I believe.
Well, we're 41st in terms of those criteria.
Sorry, state of Ohio.
State of Ohio, yes.
One of five site locations that.
They're in the top line.
Yeah. So just, it's something that shows the impact that our community is having on a national level and we're being recognized for our innovations as far as bringing in workforce, bringing in jobs and making our place a business-friendly community. So I watched it, very good. Thank you.
You have to hand, you want to pass them around?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
I don't know if everybody got to see this because you kind of just want, I'll leave, I'll skip this tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
So if you want to look at it, you know, at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else to address council this evening? Yes, you stepped the podium, please. Name and address.
January 5, 15th Street, here in Bussiris. Good evening, Madam President and council members. I've already submitted to you my questions via email that I was going to read for the record. Regarding the possible railcar converted to a soundstage for Schein's Art Park, I have a few questions. In the term of the agreement for possible repayment, if the grant is not administered correctly or if failures found during the audit, it's 15 years according to section 3 on the agreement on page two. On page four, section 15, the agreement states the grantee, who is the city of Bussiris, will keep all records and reports associated with the project funded under this agreement available to the state auditor or the auditors designated, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and Ohio Public Facilities Commission for a period not less than 18 years after the period of project closure. That would be June 30th of 2020. So we're looking at a timeframe that we're considering of June 30th, 2035 to June 30th, 2038 and possibly longer. According to the past through grant agreement, an audit can be done of the project during the first 15 years while the state holds a vested interest in the park. And should any part of the audit be deemed a failure, the citizens would have to pay back the $120,000 plus spent. During those 15 years or the amount of 18 years, the city is required to file reports with the above-mentioned state agencies. My question, how long will an already-used boxcar that has been cut in half to accommodate the space available last? And in what kind of condition will it be at the end of this timeframe? From what fund will the regular annual maintenance be paid? And what will the maintenance schedule moving forward from June 30th, 2020 and annual cost of activity? Thank you.
We haven't even decided on a boxcar. We're currently investigating all the options, including incorporating a railboxcar. You know, as far as we're cutting it in half on it, you know, that's, that's even, we haven't gotten even to anything like that. Our goal was really just to construct a venue, whether it's a boxcar or whatever it is, that will support a wide variety of activities, arts. And we had, at the same time, we had to keep the project within budget. And to make sure we do this, we're reaching out to a potential users, including the Browlers Festival and other design professionals to advise us on this. And once we have any needed information on this, then we'll finalize a decision and we'll make it known to the public. And we don't have that decision right now and we expect to have, reach a decision pretty soon, probably within the next month or so because we want to have that complete by June 2020. And that's what the mandated completion date is. And if we do decide on a boxcar or some type of incorporation of a boxcar at a stage, you know, we'll have a maintenance plan developed at that time.
I guess I'll ask a question. Regardless of being a traditional standalone stage, a boxcar or whatever you decide or they decide or we decide as a community, put in there, you're gonna have to have a maintenance schedule for it. You're gonna have to either create a fund for that maintenance or it'll be Parks Fund, which would honor the repair or maintenance of.
Just like all our parks, we don't have the anti-parks fund.
But you don't anticipate creating like a separate fund for the Schein's Art Park stage?
No.
Any other questions, founder? Anyone else to address council this evening? No one. Moving on to communications and petitions.
We've got one communication. This is from Bussiris Lodge Number 68 of the patrol order police dated March 14th, addressed to Bussiris City Council regarding the Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show. The Bussiris Lodge Number 68 Patrol Order Police Incorporated respectfully request permission to close all the streets on Saturday, June 8th, 2019 for the Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show. We would like to close the 100 block of East Warren Street from 7:00 a.m. until 12:00 a.m. midnight for the food court. Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue from 12:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m. midnight. We would also like to close Washington Square, 100 blocks of East and West Mansfield Street, 100 block of West Warren Street, 100 blocks of East and West Rensselaer Street, and the 100 block of East and West Charles Street from 12:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m. midnight. Your attention and support, this matter would be greatly appreciated as this is a great event for our state. Respectfully, Tracy Keegan, Treasurer, FOP Lodge Number 68, and then it's referred to health and safety.
I need, I'm wishing to refer this to health and safety.
So.
Motion by Mr. McHeever, second by Mr. Trump. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And we're back again. This has gotta be like 26, 7 years now for the car show?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes. Interesting time downtown.
Thank you guys for taking that over.
Interesting time downtown, right? Okay. That's it for communications and petitions. Standing committee reports. Bussiris Joint Regular Committee, Mr. McHeever, you're getting us started this evening.
Okay. Bussiris City Council Joint Regular Committee meeting met Thursday, March 7th, 2019 from 6:00 p.m. to 6:42 p.m. Members present, myself, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truken, Monica Sack, Doug Foat, Andrew Shaw, Kevin Myers absent. Bussiris City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by myself at 6:00 p.m. Public participation, Henry Howe, 531 South Walnut Street, spoke in opposition to a proposal to convert a railcar into a stage for Schein's Art Park and suggested working with Pioneer Career and Technology Center and Shelby to have its students build a stage. Order of committee business, A, plating committee. Plating committee convened at 6:07 to 6:23 p.m. Members present, Monica Sack, Bruce Truken, and myself, chair. Number one, zoning variance notification protocol. The committee received a letter from the city's Board of Zoning Appeals expressing support for a committee proposal to modify the notification protocol by posting the board's meeting details on the city's website, social media account, and access TV channel, as well as requiring applicants to post a sign on their property with the same details. The board passed a resolution to, of support for the posting of signs on the applicant's property for 14 days prior to hearing. The board did not express support for expanding the existing mailing notification area of 200 feet from the applicant's property. Fred Miller, 785 Arrowhead Drive, asked if applicants are screened before the requests are allowed to proceed and was explained that, that it is what the board's hearing, hearings are for, provided the requests are properly filed. He suggested that 14 days wasn't enough time for posting, for posting of signs and that 200 feet is too small a circumference for mailing. It was proposed, it was proposed that the mailing protocol could be changed to include either all properties within 200 feet of the applicant's address or a minimum number of properties for those areas of the city where properties are more sparsely distributed. The matter was continued. The committee recessed the plating committee at 6:23 p.m.
Any questions or comments regarding the plating committee meeting? None. Moving on, finance committee?
Finance committee met Thursday, March 7th, from 6:23 p.m. to 6:42 p.m. Members present, Dan Wireball, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Number one, various appropriations. Order of Joyce Schiffer, qualifying quality appropriations needed to be made. A, from unappropriated general funds, $1,000 to Program One Security of Persons and Property, 7110 and 7111 Police Department, 24 materials and supplies for donation received for. 7110 and 7111 Police Department, 24 Ethereals and Supplies for donation received for Safety Town. B, from unappropriated general funds, $50,000 to 430 Fire Lobby, 7115 Fire Department, 25 Capital Outlet for Mark's Grant Fund received for new radios. Chauvin made a motion for a rest legislation making the two appropriations, with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by Joyce Pope. Number two, reduction. Schiffer explained that the ordinance 16-2019 passed on February 19 to make the reduction of $80.78 in 282-2019 Victims of Crime Act, 7111 Victim Advocate, 21 Personal Services to correct an error in the 2019 budget had the wrong department number. It should be 7728. Law Director Robert Atlas suggests ordinance 16-2019 be repealed and replaced to make the change. Wireball made a motion to request legislation to that effect, with a second by Shock. Motion passed by Joyce Pope. Three, WPCLF loan application. Branson Apparel Inc. is requesting a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for 0% loan funds through the State Water Pollution Control Loan Fund for Group One Design and Group Two Designs in construction, part of the city's ongoing EPA mandated combined sewer overflow reduction project. Legislation to that effect was held to first reading at council meeting on March 5. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner explained that if loan legislation is not passed, Branson Apparel Inc. would have to halt its work on the project, and the USPA could accept city residents for the cause. Wagner was asked how the legislation held to first reading on March 5 differed from a resolution 224-2017 passed by council on August 3, 2017, which were virtually identical. Wagner will look into it, and following a discussion, instead of this project, the matter was continued. Number four, Sack resents the finance committee at 6:42 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the report of the finance committee? If you continue, please.
Number four, public participation, there was none. Number five, Sack asked for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees, motion by Wireball and second by Truca adjourned at 6:42 p.m. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. The finance committee met in special session this evening, excuse me, on Thursday, March 19? Tuesday, March 19, at 19 at 6:45 p.m. The Sack, you have a report for the finance committee?
Yes.
Madam President, your minutes for tonight's meeting are not going to reflect the discussion that took place today. So, I mean, you can read those minutes, but you're going to need to amend those minutes subsequently.
Until we, for next, they'll be part of the minutes for this meeting?
Yes, well, for the next meeting.
Next council meeting.
Because the minutes that we have don't reflect all the discussion that we had back to the back. So, the short version is what we have.
Yes, that's all we're getting tonight. Okay.
So, Ucires City Council Committee, the special finance committee met tonight, 45 p.m. to 7:10 p.m. Members present, with Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shock, and myself. Number one, the special finance committee meeting was called by council president Sislove and the administration to discuss appropriations and a WPCLF loan application. Meeting was called to order by Monica at 6:45 p.m. Number two, appropriation, it was $7,500, was appropriated due to monies that came in, appropriated to capital outlet items to purchase bicycles for the officers. There was a first by Wireball, second by Myers. All were in favor, and the motion passed. Number three, the WPCLF loan application, this was 0% loan from the state of Ohio. This was a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept an interim to a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city. This was to request legislation. The first by Shock, second by Myers, were in favor. It was opposed by Wireball. Motion passed. Number four, Wireball adjourned the special finance committee meeting at 7:10 p.m. with a second by Myers.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Traffic commission, we don't have any traffic commission minutes. Are there any reports from the traffic commission? When is one scheduled?
We have it Friday morning at 10:00 a.m.
This Friday at 10:00 a.m., and that meeting is in council chambers?
Right.
Okay. Any questions regarding traffic? Yes, Mr. McHeever?
The intersection of Beale South, Marion Road, and Highway 24 Farmview?
Sure.
When is there going to be a no right-hand turn at Farmview?
We're discussing that Friday morning on the agenda.
Did Bill Ward have it taken down?
I think he might have. Should we invite him to the meeting?
I don't know, he might be.
I just, you've seen that, a near accident, I just...
Yeah, it's coming up Friday.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving on, I need a motion for the separate committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pope, second by Mrs. Sack. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We have a report of city officers, starting with the mayor, Mr. Ester.
Madam President, I just want to clear up something on the loan that we talked about before I started my regular remarks. For every million dollars that we borrow, it's going to cost the residents over 30 years $6.06, or about 50 cents a month to borrow that money, right, interest-free. So, try to imagine the value of $6.06 in five, 10, 20, 25 years. So, you see, it's, do inflation, it's easier. If we don't borrow it and we go out and fund, we go out and do a million dollars' worth of tie-ins, that will cost the residents $181.82 a month. Excuse me, a year, pardon me, which will be about $15 in addition to what they're paying out. That's per million dollars. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to go do the $4 million because no resident would want to pay $720 a year. That gets backed in what some of the Ohio EPA wanted us to do. But we're asking the residents basically as 50 cents a month to start out with, and, so we think it's a good deal for the residents. Okay, back to the regular event. Last night, we had four elected officials, federal officials, and state officials in town for a banquet at Trillium. It was great to see Supreme Court Justice Judy French, Senator Portman, Congressman Jordan, as well as state rep, Reardon McLean. And we appreciate their concern. Had a great crowd, 150 or more people. It was a nice, very nice, nicely done by Big Gervais and his staff at Trillium. The partnership, which Gary Frankhouse talked about, had State of the Vision last week. They did a fantastic job. He alluded to author Melody Warwick, beautiful talk about that. I mean, we all need to, I've read that book before, I'm going to read it again. This is called This Is Where You Belong. You all have a copy of it there. And it's interesting, she was number one resource that helps citizens to bond to their community is walking and bypass, number one. So, that's been a focus of our administration from the beginning, and we're trying to get it off the ground. And like I say, we've got the first one coming. We already applied for another grant on that, too. You all have a copy there, and if you need a copy, let me know. Kelly and I met with Winford High School students. Gary talked about the importance of being with the students, about community opportunity. Winford was the last group I met with. I do it every year, Mr. Bant's class. And just as the meeting with Crawford and VHS, kids are in town, involved, good questions. And I love to meet with them, and basically what I'm doing is giving them a very personal invitation. We have jobs for them. We'd like them to stay at work, go get your education, and come back. Brittany Slavel is the champion of the 51st Women's Invitational. Nice crowd there on Saturday. Carrie Spears, runner-up. Both Brittany and Carrie were classmates of our daughter, so, you know, it's nice to see the young kids picking up bowling. And if you add Nathan Monk to that, three out of the four bowlers were, you know, under 30, so it's great to see the young people out there. Tree Board met this evening, that's who you heard walking behind us. And we have so much on our agenda. We're trying to focus on 2019. We have a one-year plan, and then a five-year plan that we're working on. We've got an aggressive agenda, great group of volunteers. You know what our tree canopy looks like? You just have to look at Poplar Street and see what some of the other streets are. All every street looked like Poplar Street at one time. And Poplar Street isn't going to look like that forever, because those trees are getting a little rough, some of those, too. So, we thank them for their volunteer spirit and for your support of this low-cost program. It's certainly very beneficial. Couple more things here, Terry Spiegel, who's with us tonight, happy retirement, 47 years.
Hey!
Yeah. He's, we won't make any wastewater jokes. We've already got all those out of our system. So, Terry will be busy in retirement, continuing his legacy of service to those less fortunate, as he's done through his working career at Good Hope Lutheran Church. And he's the district governor of Lions Club International. He's got a big convention coming up next month. Thank you, enjoy your retirement. A few things, First Federal is now open, congratulations, Monica. And I saw Brad today, and I'm excited to see if he can get a chance to get there today, but I will be down there. I got a wonderful letter in the mail today from Arbor Day Foundation, said, Mayor Jeff Reese, Dear Tree USA supporter, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I write to congratulate Ucires on earning recognition as a 2018 Tree City USA. Residents of Ucires should be proud to live in a community that makes the planting and care of trees a priority. We are one of 3,500 Tree City USAs with a combined population of 150 million. And Mr. Truca will correct me if I'm, I think Ohio's number one, am I right there? I think Ohio has the most Tree City USAs.
Yes, you're right.
All right, good. Okay. Sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation, it would cost nothing, it's just our investment in our trees and our budget. And then we have next month, I think the council members get an invitation in the mail to the Tree City USA. I think, if not, I'll make sure to get that to you. Mr. Ross Dash's home turf over there, Crestline, is hosting that, where we'll get our second year award, that's April 18. And I think that's it, except for one last, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Like us on Facebook, we only have a city of Ucires Facebook pages, which we're, and we had some trouble with it, Facebook was down last week, so we had a couple of them put up this week that were actually last week's, but two or three minutes invested, and it's a good idea to see what's going on at Ucires. So, like us on Facebook. So, thank you, Madam President.
Any questions or comments for the mayor this evening? None? Moving on, Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner's report?
Yes, I have had two. Spring into wellness, I believe I gave that to everyone also. If you take it and maybe you put it up in your place of work, we would certainly appreciate that. The city of Ucires employees will be hosting the first-ever Wellness 5K walk run on Saturday, April 6, at 10:00 a.m. It'll begin a friendship shelter, all of our parks, $10, and you'll get a free t-shirt. But you have to register by next week to do it, the 25th. All proceeds will go to get new bikes for Safety Town. And information on registration is on our city website, or call our office. Compo site is now open Saturdays, are now open on March 30, excuse me, from 8:00 to 1:00, and then after that will be open for normal hours, which is Wednesdays through Fridays, 8:00 to 2:00, and Saturdays, 8:00 to 1:00. We're taking applications for summer help in the parks, lifeguards, and from the pool concession stand. Applications are in the mayor's office. Material bids were open last week on Tuesday, and the bids will be awarded after the specs for each item has been verified. The farmland bids were opened actually today at 10:00 a.m., so tomorrow we open them today at 10:00 a.m. General labor interviews, we have completed the first round of interviews for general labor position, and we were out, we made two, we interviewed 10 people, we made two offers today. One accepted, and we'll hear back to the other one. We had, I will say, 17 people took the test, we interviewed the top 10, we had 10 outstanding candidates, and we're thrilled to give them. Billing clerk custodial applications, we had 15 for that job. And the civil service test is this Sunday in council chambers. The All Miller Park concession stand received an excellent food alert from the Crawford County Public Health Environmental Health Director, Steve John Giac. Our dedication to food safety at the All Miller Pool concession stand, congratulations to everybody involved. You know, Jeff and Kelly went and took classes last year, got certified. Traffic commission, as we mentioned, will be Friday at 10:00. We had a conference call with Bodie and Air about the reservoirs, and we're submitting a schedule, sending out for their approval this week, and then they'll get back to us in approximately two to four weeks. At that time, we will discuss it in committee. To all customers with a billing date of March 14, 2019, there is an error with the due date that is printed on the bill. The due date is April 5, 2019, not March 20. So, you have more time than you think. Don't worry, you won't be shut off if you don't pay your bill by March 20. So, very sorry for confusion, they're new software. Police Department, along with the fire department, conducted a drill at Ucires Elementary School on March 11 for a bomb threat. Everyone was evacuated in about 15 minutes. It was a very successful drill. That's the end of the program. We do have one referral. Tree Board is interested in developing a memorial tree program for the city where loved ones can, for a certain amount, have a tree planted in one of the parks for a deceased loved one. And we'd like to discuss that in committee.
Seven? That's it. Thank you, Madam President. Okay. I didn't hear the thank you at the end, so. Thank you, thank you. It's my turn. Okay. We have one referral, and this will go to Public Lands and Buildings, a request for a memorial tree program. I need a motion, please.
Salute, second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Pope. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. That'll be in Public Lands and Buildings now. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the service safety directors? I got one. Yes?
Do the people go to the open, Doc?
Well, it's going to depend on the weather, you know. It's going to depend on...
They got the work done, they were going to do work inside over the winter, have they got that done?
I don't know. I'm not sure it's completely finished yet, so.
I know they've been working on it, because I had a discussion with somebody with their head stuck down to click a hole somewhere out there.
Yeah, they've been working, can't save this down yet. We're still in snow shopping mode.
Well, I'm sure.
We'll start worrying about the pool here as soon as the weather breaks a little. But it's, the contract's been set, they're ready to go soon because of the weather. And the plans are that it will be done by the end of May.
Any other questions? None? Moving on, law director, Mr. Appel.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I have a report tonight, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Appel this evening?
Enjoying your job.
I just wanted, we had an email discussion, and if there's something we need to, we need to put something back in committee or remind, you said it's all in committee, but I would like to move on that. It's about air of buildings and things like that.
Yeah, Mr. Wireball emailed me about a property, again, it's back, it's trash violations. That particular property owner's his third offense, most recently court granted, he'll make first or clean up the property. So, we're working on that. But, Mr. Wireball also questioned about what we can do on some other things. One of the things that we struggle with in the property maintenance area is we have many, many homes in town that are owned by individuals that are physically unable or financially unable to take care of their houses. So, it's, you know, it's a balancing act sometimes. You don't, broke people out in the street, you know, their home is their castle, and you want to try to work with them. And so, one of the things we've looked at over the years is ways to maybe find avenues to help those individuals. One of the things that council did wisely, I think, is we were working on... One of the things that council did wisely, I think, is we worked with Pogomire to have residential properties added to our CRA, their buy zone stuff. I just sent them some photos this last week, and they want to update the zoning map, because we changed the zoning in the middle of this, so we have to update that. But that's one thing that's happened. But another thing is, you know, where can we raise money from? And what's been pending in council for some time now is our settlement, rental property registrations, vacant building ordinances, all those sorts of things. The vacant building ordinances are ubiquitous, so many, many, many towns have them, to the extent now that we usually, I get a couple of calls a month from Ohio State banks asking what our vacant building ordinance is, how much they have to pay. And we don't have one yet. But those, and the proposal that we put together, and what is common throughout most of those proposals, the amount of fees, one property over five years would have generated in excess of $10,000 in vacant building license fees. And that's not really a tax on that building. It is more transferring the cost of that building being vacant from the city and the residents to the individuals that are either holding them, or investing them, or whatever they're doing with those properties. But those are all, that's revenue, that's a source of revenue that, you know, the city can then put back into houses and residences and businesses and things like that, that are looking for additional avenues to maybe upkeep or maintain the properties. Additionally, the rental property registrations, something that we've dealt with often on over the course of time. We have a lot of problems with rental properties. We don't necessarily know whose in home, we don't necessarily know what the conditions of them are. As I told Mr. Wireball in our email, I know right now where there are rental properties that portions of the interior are unfinished, ones where there isn't heat, ones where there isn't running water. We just had one the other day where we, you know, it's gonna be a theft of services case when the extension closure ran across the field and into another house. And ones where there's open sewage in the basements. So, those are all issues that are out there that we deal with. But those are all things that are in committee that, you know, we can talk about any type of life. There are people that are opposed to rental property registrations, there are people that are opposed to vacant building ordinances, and I get that. But there are also problems that we have to find ways to fix them. There are a lot of buildings that sit vacant for years and years and years. There's buildings that are vacant now that 30 years ago, when I left high school, lived out of town, were vacant buildings then, and are still there. So, that's an issue we have.
Do you want it back on the agenda for this Thursday?
Well, I guess, whoever the committee is, it's in.
Whose committee is that in? Health and Safety? You want to put it back in? And the agenda for this, for this weekend, we'll get copies of what you had submitted the last time and open the discussion items. So, anybody who wants Health and Safety, make sure you, if you don't have your own copy, get in touch with Todd, he'll give you a new copy, and you can be ready to discuss that on Thursday then. Okay? Anything else for the Law Directors? Auditor, Mrs. Schiffer.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report, and I have no referrals.
Well, that is very.
Sorry.
Okay, are there any questions, anyone else for the auditor? None? Okay, we do have the auditor's statement of catch position dated February the 28th, 2019. It was given to you at the last meeting. I need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on from the treasurer, we have the treasurer's report for January of 2019. It was given to you at the last meeting. We need a motion to accept and file that report.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Foat, Mr. Wireball, no?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Wireball.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have this agreement regarding reports of the standing or special committees and their city officers. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? For consideration of legislation for the first time.
We have three pieces of legislation, two ordinances, and one resolution. Ordinance number 21, 2019, amending and supplementing ordinance number 61, 2018, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2019. By appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of $1,000 to the materials and supplies line item within the police department category within the Program 1, Security Persons and Properties sub-paragraph. Further appropriating unappropriated federal equitable sharing funds, the sum of $7,500 to the capital outlay line item within the police department within the federal equitable sharing sub-paragraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated fire levy funds, the sum of $50,000 to the capital outlay line item within the fire department category within the fire levy sub-paragraph, and declaring an emergency. That is referred back to finance. Ordinance number 22, 2019, repealing and replacing ordinance number 16, 2019, and amending and supplementing ordinance number 61, 2018, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2019, by decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by $80.78 within the victim advocate category within the 2019 Victims of Crime Act sub-paragraph, and declaring an emergency. That is referred to finance. Resolution number 210, 2019, a resolution operating the mayor to apply for acceptance entered into a water pollution control loan fund, or WPCLF, agreement on behalf of the City of U.Sires for planning, designing, or construction of sanitary, slasher, storm sewers, and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency. That is returned to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers, oh, Mr. Peter. Second by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor to accept this as the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Ordinance number 21-2019 is referred back to Finance Committee. Ordinance 22-2019 is referred back to Finance. And Resolution 210-2019 is referred back to Finance. This is the time where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone wish to address council? No one? Do we need a recess? Okay, committee reports on pending legislation. Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable to ordinance 21-2019, the various appropriations. Finance is favorable to ordinance 22-2019, reduction. And Finance is favorable to Resolution 209-2019, the WPCLF loan.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. Shaw, to accept these reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For the consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 21-2019, which are various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Shaw?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
Foat?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 21-2019?
So moved. Second.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
Foat?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 21-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Saq?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
ordinance number 21, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 21-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Saq?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
ordinance number 21, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 21-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Saq?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
ordinance number 22, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 21-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Saq?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
Foat?
Yes.
ordinance number 22, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 22-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Saq?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
ordinance number 22, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 22-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Saq?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
ordinance number 22-2019, the reduction is duly adopted. Thank you very much for that. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution number 210-2019, which is the WPCLF loan, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Foat?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution number 210, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution number 210-2019?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Foat?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Trucco?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
ordinance number 2210-2019, the WPCLF loan is duly adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business they'd like to bring up this evening? Mr. Rattler?
I have something new, and I tried to trade away what Mr. Hill earlier. I apologize. I do have one I'd like to refer to the Health and Safety and Finance Committee. I'd like to refer the issue of fire equipment, please.
Fire equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the CO2 arms and all that? That's our.
No, no, that's the Health and Safety only issue. That's a legislation thing. No, this is fire equipment for Health and Safety and Finance.
Okay, I need a motion then to refer to Health and Safety and Finance, fire equipment.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers, motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Shaw, to place discussion of fire equipment in Health and Safety and Finance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.